We're all here now.
Your planning board meeting order, can we all rise for a pledge of the flag?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Give the secretary full attendance, please.
Here.
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 Is this the room?
Yep.
Is it right now?
Here.
Here.
Here. Okay. All the board members who received the minutes from the November eighteenth meeting. There's no comments regarding the minutes, we get a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay, motion made, say it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so motion carries. Being that we started this evening at seven o'clock. Our first item on agenda is a public hearing, we're gonna hold that off until later in the, later towards the end of the meeting due to the fact that the publication was put out for seven thirty. Just so that the public has the opportunity to get here in ample time. So that will put us into our discussions this evening. So our first item for discussion is the Kowalski lot line realignment. Basically, we have a resolution to vote on tonight. Everybody's received the resolution. Is there anybody here tonight from Kowalski? Okay.
I'm just myself, Timothy Kowalski.
Yep, okay.
And I'm here for the lot line.
Okay, you've received a copy of the resolution from the planner?
So I had something in email, but I got some more information that they wanted to bring forward as far as deeds and taxes paid.
Okay, yeah, it was a, it was a six-page document that you got?
Yeah, we did, we did forward a copy via email, so I'm sure that's what you received.
Yeah, I believe this is what I've read.
Okay, yeah, 'cause you said they were asking for information regarding the deed.
Yes, some information.
Okay, so you've read the resolution?
Yes.
Have no, no comments, concerns regarding it? Okay, so as long as you have no objections to the resolution. Get a motion to approve the resolution for.
I'll make that motion second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so motion carries. So basically you've gotten your approval.
Thank you.
We'll go ahead and just meet the, you just have to meet the conditions written in the approval, just stay in contact with the secretary and once you've met them all, we'll sign off and be all set.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You got them?
Well, Mr. Kowalski, just one, I guess we'll need a deed transferring title for the strip from the one property owner to the other. So, you know, whatever the strip of property is.
Yeah.
It's gonna go from one, are they both in the same name?
No, the one is my mother's, was in my mother's name and she has an, there's an executor on that.
Okay.
And the other's mine.
Are they both going into the same owner?
No, I'm just taking one more echo.
Okay, so what you're gonna need is a separate deed, which is gonna get recorded in the county clerk's office. Which is gonna transfer ownership of that strip from the existing owner to you.
Won't that happen after the map's bow?
It should go in at the same time.
Okay, separate deed transferring property or description meeting.
And they can, the surveyor can give you a meat and bounce description of that strip.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
And if you have, sure.
All right, our next item is two sixty-six near Hackensack Road, roof mounted solar panels.
What's that?
Good evening, everyone. The last time we came, we had to get FAA approval and then also approval from the airport and we had to do, get a special piece of software to show that the glare was not gonna impede with anyone flying into the airport, which was quite the experience going through that. The first time doing a solar system, but we got that program, gave it to our engineer and we got both approvals from the airport to move forward, so. I think we sent in all those documents, one was from a letter from the FAA and the other one was from the director of aviation at the airport.
You've received a copy of the resolution from the planner?
I believe so.
Dated January the third.
Yes, yep.
Okay, you've read the resolution, so may have no questions regarding.
No.
Okay. All right, so at this point we've a, we need to get a motion to approve the resolution of site plan development.
I'll make that motion to approve.
Okay, so motion's been made?
Seconded.
Okay, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so motion carries. So you're all set, just whatever needs to be addressed in the resolution, get the paperwork in and go from there.
Awesome, thank you very much, everyone.
Okay. Okay, next item on the agenda is Hindu Samaj amended site plan to discuss a parking lot addition.
Just remember last, whoever was here with this shit is supposed to, they're supposed to do, span the parking lot, relocate the entrance garage. And Shell Service and Burger Engineering. Now, since you saw the plan last time, they will be abandoning the driveway to the house. Yeah, into the house, which is parked up in the parking lot, and walk in to the house. The location, we were proposing location of the drive, only to meet with the highway supervisor, county engineer for confirmation, would they accept that? But November wasn't the time to meet that highway supervisor, so it changed our, we'll be doing that, getting get it with him. And the next I'll call him, I'll sub immediate to confirm the location. All right, I haven't seen anything yet unless Pete asks concerns at this point. We've been out to the site distance for good, Kowalski, haven't been the site distance yet, till half this thing's set, so what do you need to do on that?
I guess you've received both the letter from the planner and the engineer regarding the, you know, their reviews.
I know, I see the engineer one, I did receive the planner one.
You did receive, you say you didn't receive one from the engineer?
No, I did not receive one from the engineer.
I'm sorry, it was supposed to be emailed over to you. Last, last Friday.
I saw the plan. Here, Michelle. So I saw those, as far as the lights.
Well, maybe, all I'll do is we'll have, we'll have Pete go through the, through the letter in its entirety with you real quick.
Sure.
And then we could discuss whatever issues come up with that and then, and then we can go, go from there.
Okay. I think the first thing we should probably, probably go over is the circulation, although I think, I think Sarah's office will cover some of it also, but Michelle, we had our workshop meeting like earlier and there was a lot of discussion about the circulation in, through here. So it seems like the consensus amongst other planning board members and consultants was that we look at making a change where cars, cars coming in would be able to go to the right. Turn this around, make this one-way, this way, but also allow them and keep, keep what you have. So basically cars entering would be able to go either up on the center aisle or come towards the right side and come in, that would make all the, all the traffic having to come out through the new parking lot and then like exiting. We thought it would be better to get more people in and control the exiting movement, make it a little bit easier than having two, having two potential exiting here. And then at the same time, striping this so that even though, even though we're not gonna change the actual size of the lot, angle these, angle these parking spaces in both of these lots here that are gonna be one-way. Angle them so it does give more of the appearance of a one-way aisle and then one of the comments that we had before, you know, we talked about this possible changes even up in this, in this new lot. You know, again, being it's gonna be a one, one-way, design it like that, you know, to go with, I forget, I think it's a sixteen-foot aisle and then go, you know, with angular parking spaces. That would, that would cut down on the width of the, width of the lot a little bit, which would also help with drainage runoff. So maybe we wanna have that like discussion first about, you know, the circulation, because that was obviously a big topic.
I mean, the, the circulation, I mean, it kinda makes sense to, you know, just for that one intersection.
I understand what you're saying. The temple asked us to do this, but they felt it would burn best from what they've seen, but the other issue is that this is steep, these driveways are steeper, this is all pretty flat. So in the winter, they thought that most people would be using it out here and they wouldn't have to worry as much about traffic using this. It's a trick with six rate. The other thing, when you got a little parking, you only save two and a half feet of width, which is really a lot of parking spaces. Because I looked at for the angle parking out here.
Trying to visualize it. If it's causing a conflict, then people coming down.
And I looked at the thing and the, the width across here is sixty feet, and if I went to say a sixty degree angle, we're only going down fifty-seven and a half. And that's per the town code.
But how could that be though, if the, you know, the aisle way?
Because.
There you go.
Oh, gotcha, thank you.
If the aisle way, if the aisle way is gonna be reduced from, from twenty-four to eighty.
Because when they do the angle parking, you have, it actually, the, the measurement comes from here.
Yeah.
So this asphalt is over here, here's the town code with the.
Okay, all right, well, we'd have to look at that with you.
So, so that's the only two reasons, I mean, yes, logically it seemed like you go in and come out, but they, in their experience, they felt that this would work better with how their, how their operations were.
Are they gonna salt the whole parking lot when the winter, when the time comes? Are they gonna shut off that top parking lot?
I'd have to confirm with them, all I know is that they said that this would be a little bit steeper, so they didn't plan that they'd probably use it very much. I'm not sure when their busiest days are. But I, what I'll do is, I mean, I'm not completely shutting it down, I'll talk to them about this.
Because the way they have, now they have a confusion at that intersection with three parking lots. parking lots.
Yeah, yeah, it's, you know, this is a stop, this can go either way.
It's kinda, yeah, there's that, you know, with that one point, it's kinda, it's kinda awkward situation there. And the way it's currently set up now is, you know, if you have people coming in and you have somebody trying to get out, out of the, out of the right parking lot, you know, they have to cross over that lane. If you kinda shifted everybody through, it kinda alleviates the flow a little bit. So that everybody going, you know, everybody would be coming out on the left. Anybody going in will go in on the right, and there wouldn't be a crossover, you know, an intentional crossover of traffic in that area. And then, at the same time, that would kinda help you tighten up some of the, the blacktop there, so you don't have as much of it, and reduce some of the impervious surface, which I think that's what the engineer was trying to get at.
Right, yeah, no, I understand that. And they also asked that this be this wide, I mean, this big of a radii. I'm not sure what their, their purpose was, but I can talk to them about that. This one is, is striped, so that if a fire truck had to get through, it could get through that area. But I'll?
Well, we will have to, you know, circulate this to the fire department to look at.
Right, they'll have to look. The Fire Prevention Bureau will probably review that and come back with comments. I'm not sure if they already did.
I don't know.
But even with a, if it becomes revised, you know, they would wanna, you know, make comment on the revised version.
So I'll, I'll discuss it with them, and, you know, take your comments, and then come back with what they'd like, and see what I can do to tweak it.
Well, I mean, I, I think the board is pretty much in, like, agreement, right, that we do, that we do want the, you know, the two ends, you know, the two, two lots?
Yeah, we wanna see a traffic controlled situation.
Yeah.
Because that is not controlled.
People need to be able to roll in and not stop on the way in, so they don't back up on Brown Road and stuff.
Well, what, okay, 'cause what you have, if you have both in here, and everybody always coming out here, you just stacked everybody, all this entire parking lot just stacked up through here. Or, or Pete, did you say you wanted this two-way?
No, not one-way.
So if it's all one-way in, that's okay, but at the end, that means it's the entire parking lot?
That's right, everybody would have to exit.
Have to come out through here. And, I mean, I've got the slopes in the backup plan in there, or?
Well, up at the top, up at the top, it looks like the slope difference is about two feet, but, but down, but down there, but down there by the house, it looks like by your plan, it's about six feet difference from the, from, you know, the parking lot down to, you know, the access, access point.
Right, I think on the plan, I have the slope written, so that?
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, with the traffic movement, though, you're talking about bottlenecking, I think it's either way, it's gonna be a bottleneck, even if it's coming, you know, out from the right side, you know, or having a bottleneck up at the top, you know, closest to the temple, coming, you know, through that upper parking lot. And either way, it's?
Any way you draw it.
It's, it's gonna be something, but it'd be less confusing at the, you know, at that intersection, you know, leading to all of those, if everybody just went to the right. I think that's what they're, everybody's kinda getting to, is if they all come in, go to the right, they go up to one aisle, they can come, you know, or go up to center aisle, they could just come back through. And then if everybody's coming out that one way, they're already to the other side, to the left side, and they don't have to cross over anybody coming in in order to get out of, you know, out of the property.
Right.
It appears any way you draw it, you're gonna have two lanes converging into one at some point. And I think the congestion up at the top would be better than that near the entrance.
Okay, the congestion at the top will be where pedestrians are. So it's a matter of congestion in a pedestrian area versus congestion?
You have pedestrians walking through their cars they'll have to watch out for, too.
And, you know, and the, the other thing with this is, most people are gonna fill these parking spaces first. So people will come up, and, you know, these might get taken, the handicap over here will get taken, then these over here, and here will get taken, and these will be the last ones. So I'll, I'll review it.
It might be something that you could look into, possibly, you know, tweaking a little bit.
Yes.
All right, the other things we had was, our second comment was, the plan has labeled where there's an existing driveway up in there, and, but when I went out there the other, the other day, it's not really a grab a drive anymore, you know, it's overgrown, so nobody's using it, so, you know, it's fine, because we're not gonna go to any way to leave it there.
Okay, because it's all sorts of, except for when there's snow, it's an emergency access.
Yeah, and then, I wasn't sure why, why you're not removing, you know, all this, because, you know, it's useless in here. I know you're taking out this, but why not just take out, take out all this and make it lawn area?
I, I just, I left, well, there is a garage here, so I'd want something, you know, to get the mower in out. The other thing, too, is, like, one times we were up there, the kids' ride-on toys were up in here, so I wanted to leave it so that the kids in the house could, you know, be on their big wheels and things.
And that's really up to the board, I mean?
But that's up to the board.
What is your reason for that?
There's, there's kids living in the house, and then they can have their ride-on toys, their little big wheels, or tricycles, or whatever, on the existing asphalt.
And how old are these kids?
Well, the, the?
I'm kidding with you, I'm kidding.
I know, the kid, the toys I saw that were, like, little, little, little kid toys, not. But that's, but that's up to you guys, I mean, I can reduce it or whatever, I just...
Yeah.
Do you want anything?
I don't think it's gonna affect anything if it stays.
No, I just brought it up, I mean, it's really, really a board decision, it's not really an engineering issue.
I mean, it's cutting, I mean, the, the most important part was removing the, the entrance, which was close to the intersection.
Right, Brown Road, right.
Yes, yeah. And I understand getting rid of asphalt, but just?
All right, the other thing is, and again, when we meet with the highway super ten, when we meet with the highway super ten, this is gonna, this is gonna be curbs, so we should take the curbs and maybe set them back a couple feet on each, on each end, and then also have taper on the end of the curb?
Okay, like a DOT.
So we don't have an issue with snow plows. On the grading plan, you should, there's, there's a swale that runs, that runs down along here, should probably just put a couple of pipes underneath the sidewalks somewhere we did up there. And some of, other light pole, light pole bases are shown right in the, in the drain swell, on the plan, so you should?
They're gonna be?
Correct that.
Concrete ones.
We talked before, I wasn't sure about the building code as to whether both the temple and the house had to be ADA accessible. We don't think so after, like, discussing it, but it's something that we should just, that you should check, and then, you know, we'll check it also, but we just wanna make sure that this doesn't have to be ADA accessible, that's?
No, because the, the house is not?
As I say, what?
But I'll, I'll check it.
Yeah, I guess the question was, what's the house being used for?
It'll, it'll be used for residence, it'll still be used for residence, for the priests that live.
Excuse me?
It's for the priest.
So it's the public? So no public access into the, into the house?
No.
No office in there?
That's all up here.
Okay, so everything associated with the church would be confined within the, within the church or temple, I mean, it would all be in there, so there's no other use of the house other than just for living quarters?
Yes, yeah, I mean, it's, it's currently occupied by the priest, and it's continuing to grow.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll check that.
Yeah, we, we can check that.
And then, I know it's not on his plan, but you have a, you have a swale coming out of this parking lot, going into a catch basin over here, I just thought, maybe they capture that, or I'll be can just put a little stone fill in here, maybe. And you obviously have to get a town highway permit for the work along Brown Road. We had a bunch of minor comments, I'm not gonna go through them on the, on the storm drainage report, it was minor, very, very minor, just, like, corrections, so you can go look at those, but that was it for our stuff.
Did you mention something about the sidewalk?
Sidewalk.
Smale was?
Yeah, I did before, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Set?
So our first comments are regarding the EAF. It does note Indiana bat, so we were curious if you were removing any trees?
There, there will be some trees that'll be removed, they're over in this area, and I'll add a note to the plan, that says it's the November to?
Right, for the tree cutting, associated with the Indiana bat.
I didn't, I forgot to add that to the plans, that will be added to the plans.
Okay. It also says Blanding's Turtle. I don't believe there's any wetlands on the site, but if you can just confirm that, so we know that that's not an issue.
Or, there, there might be some way up here in the back, this is, this is all mowed, so.
Yeah, I, I don't think it'll be an issue, but we should address it?
I'll respond it, though.
Yeah, for the seeker review, as well as it being designated for, sensitive for archaeological sites, so we'll need to just confirm.
What I need is, I've already actually submitted, I need a letter from the planning board, or from some, you know, some thing to send, because this is under your acre, the only thing that I'm going for is seeker, and SHPO or OPRH, whatever, will not do their review for only seeker.
Okay.
If I was, if I was over in acre and I was doing the DEC, they would, and all I need is a letter from you guys?
I think we had to do that on another project.
And, and David, David is aware of this, if you wanna check with him?
Okay.
With Barbara, and if I, if I can get that letter as soon as possible?
I recall that we had to do that on another project, so.
Yes, and I've already submitted everything except in that, he's waiting for that before he goes forward with his review.
Okay. The next comment had to do, we asked the question about the existing trees, which you've answered, if you could just mark those on the plan. And then, there are some existing trees along the front, but we weren't sure what was going to be removed, so we would like there to be some additional screening plantings, nothing too large, just supplemental plantings to do some screening.
Yeah, the only, there's a tree right in here that will be removed. And there'll be the bushes put in here.
Okay.
So planning board have where they're looking, because this'll, all this whole tree area here, actually got a little aerial now that shows where the trees are, they'll be removed, which you'll get in your next submission.
Right, so it'll be more open to the parking lot now, so we were asking for some supplemental plantings in there?
To try to infill?
Yeah, to try to fill in the area?
To do some screening of the parking.
Yeah, 'cause this is the area that gets opened up.
Yeah.
So do you, do you guys have a preference?
As long as it doesn't block the line of sight, hold on.
Right.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be back from the?
Yeah.
I mean, we don't have any preference, I mean, you could come up with some type of, you know, landscape, whatever the?
Yeah, just try it, like, for a non-invasive species.
Yeah, it's a native?
Yeah, native, non-invasive.
And it's a conifer?
Yeah, just show us what they're proposing.
Okay.
The lighting, you did submit the lighting plan, we just had a question if the lights were going to be on all the time, or if they're gonna be on a timer?
That I'll, I'll have to check, 'cause I haven't, didn't I?
Yeah, because?
I just checked, but I'll, I'll respond.
If there's not nighttime services, it would seem that they wouldn't need to be on all the time.
Right, and if, if they are on, they, try to get the reduced lights ones, because sometimes they, this area may not get the kids parking, and with the house here, they may not park, but I'll see whether they're gonna be timed or turn them all the way off, or?
Or dimmed at a certain time?
I'll respond to that.
Okay. The next are related to site circulation and parking, some of this, we already went over, that internal intersection, just tightening it up a little bit to reduce some of the impervious surface. We talked about the one-way aisle on the left-hand side. We're asking for appropriate traffic control signing to be installed, and all pavement markings should follow the standards of the manual and uniform traffic control devices. We're recommending that painted arrows shown on the plan and marked to be removed on our sketch, not be shown on the site plan. And then, you had already addressed this, we were just requesting that the intersection site distance be provided at the new driveway.
Any of the members have any other questions?
No.
Okay.
As there's only one meeting in February, could we get a public hearing for February, February meeting?
For February?
It's February 3rd, I think. Because I don't know if any of these changes would be that major to?
Would you be able to have some changes, when would you be able to have the changes submitted by?
By, just coming Monday, maybe even this week.
Okay. We have enough time, Dave, for the submission, for the February meeting? Okay. All right, so the board, do we wanna schedule a public hearing, or get a motion to schedule a public hearing for?
Somebody.
For February the 3rd?
February 3rd.
Second.
Motion's made, the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so motion carries. So we'll see you on the 3rd. Okay. So our next item on the agenda is the Thomas Groundmount solar panels.
Happy New Year, everyone.
Hi, good evening. So since the last meeting, I guess you went to the zoning board, and got a, received a variance for the, I guess, for the, the size of the solar array that you're proposing?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, you've received a letter from, from the planner?
Yes.
Regarding this, okay. And basically, there's really no other information, I guess, that we're, that we're looking for at this point. Seems that what you've submitted is satisfactory. So at this point, we feel, because you, we have to take a vote on whether or not to hold a public hearing for the project, at this point, I mean, what does the board feel? That we feel that this is necessary to have a public hearing for solar array, it's just an addition to, it's already there?
I don't think we need it, no.
Okay, so you get a motion to waive the public hearing for this project?
I'll make that motion, I'll second.
Okay, motion's made, the second, it all in favor?
Aye.
So, basically, at this point, is we're not asking for any more information, and we have adequate screening, screening from the neighboring properties. Go ahead and authorize the planner for a resolu, to write the draft resolution for our next meeting? If we get somebody who wants to make that resolution, or make the?
I'll make that motion.
Make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, so a motion made, second, to have the planner draft resolution, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so motion carries. So we'll get that put together, and that will be voted upon at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. All right. Now we'll open, to the public hearing for this evening. For 479 Lloyd Andrews Hill Road Apartment House, we get a motion to open the public hearing.
Somebody.
A second.
Okay, motion made, it's second, it all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. So the floor is yours, gentlemen.
So I believe we've addressed the, the concerns of the engineer, planner's office, to launch this, some of the correspondence with, like, DEC about the, the bats, remember back from them, sent a letter, and, so you have a copy of that. We've asked for, in the? So you have a copy of that. And we've asked for the determination of their jurisdiction, just standard procedures. This bat habitat is all over this whole area, the homes, the whole towns. So I'm expecting to hear back from them pretty soon. It says really just formally that the bats don't winter here as long as the trees are taken down before March 31st, I believe. Then the bats don't have, it's not an issue of impact there. We're talking about seven trees.
All right, did, did they, did they get a copy of the?
I have a copy for them.
Okay, all right.
Oh, yes.
Yes. Oh, she didn't. Thanks, babe.
All right.
So we understand that there, there might be conditions that we have to satisfy before.
Right, so basically, the, I guess the, the resolution was written and there's a lot of, I guess there's some things that you brought in today that were addressed, you know, in that, for that resolution. So we're just going to work off of that resolution, being that you brought in the documentation, nobody's been able to fully review what you've delivered. So they can use that to go through the process and just use that as a checklist that you've taken care of. Taken care of all the items that were open from the previous meeting. Also, I believe there was a, I think this environmental assessment form you had submitted needed to be updated.
Yeah, I did that to add to Department of Public Works. I did talk with Steve Gill at the county office.
But the description of the project was also, it says four dwelling units.
Four apartments.
As opposed to what we're approving is going to be three dwelling units.
Serious form.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you could just, for the record, if that could also be submitted so that we have a complete.
Yeah.
You know, that everything coincides with the filed documents.
Many updates along the way, so that was one.
And now that, and now that, now that you've confirmed with, with the county that you don't need to do anything with them. When you resubmit, you know, the EAF and you might as well, you might as well take off county, county public works as approval agency. Now that, you know, we know for sure that they're not involved.
Yeah, I talked, you know, I got back to you today.
Yeah, no, no, yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Then there was no, you had no other open-ended?
Uh, no, I had, I had the one comment there about contacting the county, but that's been done. And then our other comment under, you know, the plans was just to have a, have a note on the plan that if, if, if they ever have to install the future SES expansion area, there's a very slight encroachment on, on the floodplain. So we just wanted a note put on the plan that just said that if the expansion area ever had to be installed in the future, that the owner would, would contact the town floodplain administrator just to see if there was in fact a permit that was required. And I just looked quickly on the plan that was submitted today and it does appear that, you know, the note's on there. But again, before, before you're going to sign it, you know, we'll double check that.
Right, we'll make sure that everything's in place.
We've included it as a condition.
Yeah, right. And then, you know, health department approval is required, obviously.
Right.
But I had a question. How come, why do they have to go get some kind of a determination from the DEC on the trees? Why can't they just cut them before March 31st?
We just require them to put the note on the plan. We usually have the applicant reach out and get the actual letter from DEC. And that, that's all that we're asking for in comment D is so that it doesn't get forgotten, that they have to.
Cut them before March 31st?
Yeah, and include that information with the plan.
Yeah, I was told that sometimes they go to the site to see if there are any.
Roosted trees.
Evidence of nesting or whatever the bats do in the trees. But a lot of times they don't bother them when it's a small impact.
Yeah.
Well, yes, I'm listed as maples, so it's typically what shag bar cake or.
Right, it's, yeah.
And these are maples, I think.
Almost all the trees I could find were maples, yeah.
Yeah, so that's not bad habitat.
So there's no, so there's really no trees that may be an issue then?
It's pretty minor.
No, so it'll just be the standard, more than likely the standard no to take them down during the acceptable time.
Okay.
How, how close is your engineer to getting health department?
We have a letter from the health department saying that it's kind of a conditional approval that that's as far as they wanted to go before we got the town approval.
Oh, okay, all right.
It was a chicken and the egg.
Chicken and egg, yeah, all right. And they had, they had that at the CBA. Okay.
All right, so I guess at this point, let's see that there's nobody here from the public. So there's, I guess at this point, we can make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, motion made second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so motion carries. Then if anyone has any questions for the applicant regarding the project, we have the resolution in front of us for, for approval. Does anybody want to make a motion to approve?
I'll move the resolution.
Okay, so made a motion to approve the resolution as written?
This is based on the three units, right?
It's based upon the, yes, correct, then, three units.
Correct.
So.
Second.
Second, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? That is a motion carries.
I have one question though for us. If he wants to cut those trees down before this March and they're only maples, and this isn't all completed by that time, is there any reason why he can't cut them down before the letter?
I don't know. I'm not really used to seeing, you know, the letter.
We wait until the site plan is signed, but there really doesn't seem to be any showstoppers that this can't be done.
Okay, so he should have plenty of time to get it done.
Yeah, that's the standard. We usually get the letter from DEC that says, but that is their requirement.
Right.
Is the cutting of that time, so.
So I will ask you to bring in a complete set, not pieces, but everything together. And then we will book it out to the consultants to try to get you a quick turnaround. And then we'll need seven copies for the chairman to sign of that.
But you'll need to have, you know, your health department approval before, before we can authorize the chairman to sign.
A narrative when you submit it on all the conditions in the resolution and how you've taken care of it.
Yeah, in that corrected EAF form.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you.
So our last item on the agenda this evening is to vote upon an extension for Myers Corners Landing subdivision. They're seeking their third two 90-day extensions on filed subdivision approval for Myers Corners Road. If granted, the extension would begin on January 9th, 2020 through July 8th, 2020. We have a motion to approve the extension.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. And then to the end of the agenda, is there any other items that we need to discuss this evening?
I have a question. Yep. For special, maybe everybody here, this thing with tractor supplies, are they all done now? They don't have to come before us anymore?
No, they, they do not have to come back to you unless they want to make changes. At this point, we're waiting for our team here for compliance letters, approving that everything has been satisfied and is written in the resolution.
Because what we should have done, I think that we should have had them have the wells attached to the properties tested. So that if there's any further problems in the future, that these are already on record. And I think that's something, if it's not too late, can we request the wells to be tested?
That protects everybody.
To say that what's in there now and what can be, might be in the future.
Tested as far as?
Contaminants or anything, because that's where all the citizens were, that border that were concerned about. It's a lot of their concern.
We can ask the applicant.
To test now and then when they're finished?
Well, no.
Just test now and then down the road if they have.
And this is where you have a baseline.
Yeah.
Five years from now, they say their wells contaminated and it's tractor supply that they don't have a recourse to come back to us because we've asked that this be done.
Like just what happened up in East Fischel on the mountain, same thing. That protects everybody from that, really.
We'll reach out to them. I mean, it's not a clear condition, but.
It's not, but I know that was one of the concerns of the public at that time and.
It certainly protects them from, you know, claims in the future, so they may be amenable to.
Gives that people a little peace of mind.
I mean, the only, the only problem is.
They gotta get permission.
You gotta get permission from the residents.
Well, and if they decline that they don't want to have their wells.
Right, that's, right, that's, right, that's their choice.
It's their, it's on them.
Right, right.
You know.
But then if. Were they storing, I think they were storing any, did they have any?
No, they don't have anything.
Right, yeah.
There's nothing, but a lot of people are concerned about that.
Yeah.
I think that would help.
Will you reach out to Neil? Yeah, I'll reach out to Neil. I mean, the other thing too is I don't know if there's, I mean, every time a house sells, single-family house sells in the town, there is a requirement for a well test, so.
Correct. But we just want to make sure that we have a clean slate going into this and they have a clean slate and there's no repercussions next year about chemical issues. Because somebody can go just dump something down their well and blame tractor supply and there's no record.
And no, I mean, the other thing too is I, I think we probably need to also have some sort of a timeframe as far as when, you know, what, what the, the tail end is for, you know, acceptance. And I guess the other question is which properties, I don't, you know, I don't know if.
I would say everything that's adjoining that.
Everything on Fowler House and borders. It's only seven or eight houses.
Well, I mean, we're talking both sides of the street or?
Right to the property.
Just on the one side?
That would.
Okay. Well, we'd also have to, assuming that they're like amenable to it, you know, after the fact, we'd also have to tell them what, you know, to test for. Well, I mean, I think it would be. You know, the parameters, I mean, unless. You do kind of the typical. A full New York State Part Five. You know, I, I think the.
I think that makes the most sense to.
What, what I would, what I would suggest is the tests in accordance with what, what's in our town code, what we require on a sale. So.
That's fine.
And to the extent that, you know, because one of the things too is to the extent they do them all together, you know, they just ship them off to the lab at the same time. Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah. I mean.
So it would be basically the basic water, standard water test that the town requires now in transactional sale?
Right.
Okay, and that picks up for pesticides and.
Chemical damage.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
It's pages and pages.
So it's pretty extensive?
It's six or $700.
Well, that's, I mean, if it's, if it's six, $700, that's almost a complete. Right. New York State Part Five, I think they're around eight.
That's what we require, the Part Five.
Oh, really? Oh, well, then it's a full test then, so you're going to get, you're going to get, you know, everything.
I mean, it's up to them, but I think I would like to see it, but.
It's, you know, it's certainly protective from a litigation point of view to the extent that anybody's going to complain. So.
I think it's a good idea.
I mean, cooperation from, you know, we're going to have to get waivers and stuff for the neighbors.
Because the applicant's willing to do it, it would make sense on their part. Like you said, I agree with the insurance policy on their part. You know, protect them for the future. I mean, even though they were, you know, they, they did, you know, state that everything is being stored inside.
They should want it as much as we do.
Right, exactly, exactly.
I mean, the, like I said, the only concern is recalcitrant neighbors.
Well, that's, yeah.
So I, you know, I think, you know, send notice and, you know, if they don't respond within. Yeah, well, they would have to do that. Yeah, they have to give them, you know, a time period. Yeah. You know, they're obviously going to say, well, you know, if they didn't mind doing it, they're going to say, well, we don't want this to hold up. You know, the signing, signing of the map, but I mean, can we somehow?
But it wouldn't.
If they're willing to do it, maybe we can tie it to something else like issuance of. Issuance of a building permit or CO or something.
Start of construction.
Yeah, that, that's fine. All right. I mean, I think they would.
That's fair.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was fair.
Yeah, okay. All right, so you'll contact Neil, because I'm going to send out some emails, you know, tomorrow as far as what our, like, review. They're just about, they're just about done. I talked to Mike Trepper today about a couple of things to do with the water supply. And I gotta just touch base with the county health department on backflow prevention. But I'll do that, do that first thing in the morning. Other than that, they've pretty much addressed all of ours and I'll write a letter. There's a couple of things, there's a couple of things I want them to add. Okay. To the map, so, not too close.
So if there would be.
I don't know if they have health department approval yet. I'm going to ask when I email. Okay.
Well, they'll need that to get the maps signed.
Huh?
They need that to get the maps signed.
Yeah, yeah. Well, um, well, they don't have a map. They just have a plot. I mean, a site plan.
Well, the site plan has to have health department.
Yeah, they gotta have health department. That was a. I thought we delayed that condition till building permit.
Did we?
I don't know. Can we send around, I think I sent an email late today, but can, can, can you send around? Because I think the final approval resolution was tweaked at the meeting and then, because we added a bunch of things or took out some things. So if I can get a copy of the final one.
And what about the cross-access easement?
I have a copy of it, so.
And that's okay to form?
I believe so. So.
Okay.
If I can get that then. Accurate stuff on a separate plan?
So they, so there was two resolutions, so there'll be two site plans.
Oh, yeah, we have accurate too, right?
Right, and the cross-access easement does that get filed in the clerk's office or at the county?
The county clerk's office.
The county clerk. So we'll need an approval letter in the original of that.
And then the other thing, I wasn't sure when I was going through the resolution today, not, you know, the resolution, but their response to our comments was, I think we got an approval letter, some kind of a conceptual approval letter from the Department of Transportation for the access. I just want to make sure that we have that. I'm pretty sure we did, we did like receive that, but.
They'll also have to submit the actual permit, construction permit to get a, a building permit to start.
Okay, did they don't need, do they need a building permit to start site work now?
Well, we're going to do a pre-construction meeting.
Okay.
So we require everything to be in place, because at that point, they're going to start.
Right. Because I think there's, I think the conceptual approval authorized like a construction access at entrance or something.
They still need the actual.
Right, yeah.
Permit.
Peter, do you need both resolutions?
Both?
The access and?
You know, I forgot about, you know, the accurate one. Yeah, that would be good, yeah. I don't, I don't know what, you know, conditions were on the accurate one, if there's any things that had to be done on the plans. Because they submitted all that stuff right around, you know, the holidays and it just wasn't, it was kind of tough to get to it, so.
Yeah, I know that, yeah, the resolution was kind of brought up on the floor and a lot of things were tweaked, so.
Yeah, I'd just like to get the.
During that process, there was a, a lot of information that was added to it.
Right.
So it's probably be good that every, actually that everybody gets circulated on.
Yeah, I'll coordinate, you know, with Sarah's office too and, you know, like Jim and make sure, to make sure that we got everything covered on, you know, both of them.
Maybe Sarah, why don't you or David just resend the amended copy?
That's what I'll do.
Because there's been so many copies this way. If you send it to all of us, we know that's the working, final copy.
Yeah.
For both of them.
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
Okay.
I want to make sure that we cover everything.
Right, that we cover everything that needed to be addressed.
And the recent applicant's here, he was hoping to check with the two of us to see what they need to have the resolution signed. You know, just want a checklist.
Well, we can talk.
And I said we plan on working on it tomorrow morning and we'll send him the checklist.
We'll be in the afternoon.
I'm sorry?
We'll discuss it in the afternoon when I'm done and then we'll call him and send him in.
That was just a courtesy, but he didn't realize the meeting was starting early.
Sure.
Okay.
And I'll coordinate with you, Bee, because you would have the copy that actually has all the blanks filled in, in the revised version. I won't have that, so, but I'll make sure that that's the version, because there were a few.
Do you want me to get it?
No, that's okay. I can coordinate with you tomorrow. That's fine. But if I circulate the last copy that I have, it won't have all the. But if I circulate the last copy that I have, it won't have all the blanks filled in that B fills in at the end, so...
Okay. Is there any other business we need to discuss this evening? Okay, get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.